Good evening, everybody. I want to welcome everybody to the May 13th, 2019 meeting of the Jersey Village City Council. Madam Secretary, Corvus present?
Yes.
Very good. We'll move into item B of our agenda this evening. This will be the prayer and pledge. This will be our teaching minister, Mr. Steve Lou from the Hope Church.
Let's all stand. It's an honor to pray for you. Let's all pray. Father God, thank you so much. As we come before you, I am just so grateful, just as a new resident of Jersey Village, to know that the City Council is asking for your help, your blessing, and prayer before we do anything. And so, we're just so grateful for that. We're grateful for the fact that we come to you as people who are needy, who are in need of your grace, in need of your power, in need of your wisdom and strength. And so, we just come to you as needy people, as also as sinners, sinners that stand before a holy God and knowing that we are, we don't stand up and we're imperfect. But yet, God, you were so loving and so gracious that, God, you didn't leave us in our brokenness and in our sin, yet you sent Jesus Christ, the Son of God, down to live a perfect life, to die on the cross for our sins, and to take our place and then to rise again. So, we just thank you so much for the cross, and we know that's available. Eternal life and forgiveness is available for all those who trust in you. And so, Father, we just pray that you would pray, that we would just ask for your wisdom upon the City Council today as they go about their business. We pray for wisdom, especially as they make important decisions and as they talk about transitions and different details and logistics of the city. We pray that, Lord, your strength will be upon them today. We pray that you give them attentiveness. We pray that you give them strength in their bones if they're tired, and we pray that you give them energy as they talk about such important things. And we pray that Jersey Village, this would go to not just a meeting tonight, but it would go to, that Jersey Village would just be a shining light, that you would bless its community, bless all of its residents, and that you would use it even far beyond these walls or far beyond our radius, that we would bless others and especially in this great city of Houston. So, we thank you for the privilege of coming before you as a good, good Father, and thank you that we can ask for your help. And we pray that your Spirit and your power be upon them, in Jesus' name. Amen. Let's all pledge allegiance and put our hands on the right hand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May we see it?
Thank you very much, Pastor Lou. We'll move into item C on our agenda this evening, election matters. Item one, consider ordinance number 2019-10 canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the general election held on May 4th, 2019 for the purpose of electing a mayor. And two City Council members placed two and three. City Council members, we have our canvas in front of us. You can now open your envelope. I will now read the totals from the May 4th election. For Mayor, Andrew Mitchum, early, 453 votes, election day, 171, for a total of 624 votes. Council member placed two, Greg Holden, early, 397, election day, 141, total 538. Mayor Lee Rosene Beasley, early, 138, election day, 102, total 240. Council member placed three, Bobby Warren, early, 445, election day, 172, for a total of 617. The official canvas of the returns of the general election held on May 4th, 2019 reflects that the following persons were duly elected to their respective positions. Mayor, Andrew Mitchum. Council member placed two, Greg Holden. Council member placed three, Bobby Warren. Now call for a motion to approve ordinance number 2019-10, canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the general municipal election held on May 4th, 2019, official.
I move to approve ordinance number 2019-10.
Second. There's been a motion second. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, and the abstentions motion carriers. This concludes the canvas of the general election held on May 4th, 2019 for the city of Jersey Village, with a total of 789 voters. Items two and three will be handled at the same time.
... I am honored. You solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I basically execute the duties...
I will legally execute the duties.
...of the office of...
The office there.
...for the city of Jersey Village and the state of Texas.
For the city of Jersey Village and the state of Texas.
And I will...
I will.
...to the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
...preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend.
...the constitutional laws...
Constitutional laws.
...of the United States...
Of the United States.
...and of this state...
And of this state.
...of Hellingham.
Come on over here, buddy. Well, I told myself I wouldn't cry. I know. You know, I was thinking about this speech for about a week and what I was going to say and try to sum up your tenure on council and as mayor, and one thing that keeps coming up is above and beyond. You really went above and beyond what a standard, you know, mayor we think would do. You stepped up during the tax day flood. You went out and found businesses to come into our city. Crime is down. Sales tax base is up. This is something that, as a person who got on council myself, to make sure I leave this community better than I found it, you knocked it out of the park. And we all just, I think I speak for everyone when I say, "Thank you so much for stepping up to serve." And we just really hope that you go on to do bigger, better things, and we know you will, and we'll be watching and cheering on for you. So, thanks so much for serving.
So, I get to say a few words, huh? Well, I read, I wrote a newsletter this month, and I took a lot of time to think about it, and I wanted to read a few things that I wrote in the newsletter, and they definitely come from the heart. I won't read the whole thing, but there's a couple of things I really want to just say to our residents, my colleagues on council, my family. In the spring of 2012, I was wearing out my walking shoes, knocking on doors, asking people to take a chance on a young guy with a lofty vision for his hometown. Today, I'm writing my last newsletter, having served as city councilman and mayor for the last seven years, and what an exciting and rewarding experience it's been. As my tenure on city council comes to a close, our family looks forward to new opportunities to work alongside neighbors and friends for our Jersey Village community. We've had a lot of successes. We've worked on some obstacles together, and we've grown as a community over the last seven years, and I'm so excited to see how we've evolved, and I'm so excited about the bright future we have in this community. But when it comes to thank yous, where do I start? I've had the good fortune of working alongside two great city managers, who each brought a different vision and perspective. I'm extremely appreciative of their leadership and their support of our vision, their mentorship. We have an amazing staff here in Jersey Village, and it's been an amazing blessing. They do some consistently great work for the city of Jersey Village. To my colleagues, past and present, thank you for your service. Thank you for your warm friendship. I have made lifelong friends as a member of the Jersey Village City Council, and I'm always, and I'll always be forever grateful for having served alongside of you. Special thanks to my wife, Allison, and our kids for their support and understanding of the many late nights, missed meetings, family meetings that we've missed. And I ultimately want to thank the citizens of Jersey Village for the trust you bestowed upon me these last great seven years. As mayor, I often spoke to boys, boy and girl scout troops on local government and civics. On one occasion, a scout asked me a simple, yet thought-provoking question. "Do you like being mayor?" I paused for a moment and reflected back on the years in elected office, the gratifying successes, the difficult challenges I was faced with, and I thought about it for a minute. And I said, "Yes, I enjoy being mayor," because I was able to explain to him that as a member of the Jersey Village City Council, I was given an opportunity to serve our community and to continue to make this a special place for ours and our neighbors' families. So, to our neighbors, our residents, and friends, it's been an honor and a blessing to serve you, and I thank you very much for the opportunity, and I'm very excited about the bright future. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. We're going to take a quick recess while we change seats. Everyone's welcome to Punch and Cookies, and we'll get back to the City Council meeting in about 10 minutes, 15 minutes. All right. We'll get back to the business at hand. We're going to go into item D, D1. Conduct a public hearing pursuant to section 34, 253 of the codes, so that the owner or the owner's representatives for the property located at 16884 Northwest Freeway, Jersey Village, Texas may appear and show cause. Number one, why such buildings or structures should not be declared to be substandard; and two, why the owner should not be ordered to repair, vacate, or demolish the buildings or structures. Okay. Going to confirm that all meeting posting requirements have been met?
Is correct.
I'm going to call upon Christian Summers, the city building official, to give a report detailing the structural deficiencies and recommending that the structure located at 16884 Northwest Freeway be repaired or demolished. Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations. Thank you, council and the new member. Super 7, which we always knew as Motel 6, substandard structure, 16884 Northwest Freeway. The property has four buildings. One, behind Takarrias or Anvis. This is considered building two, though it's connected to three and four. That's the swimming pool, of course. As explained last month, for the home on Leeds, as the building official, it's my responsibility to ensure the safety of the built environment. To that end, substandard structures need to have remedial work done, or they need to be demolished. Sent a letter to inform all interested parties of our initiation of condemnation proceedings for the as-yet-to-be-completely-secured-and-placarded-or-demolished substandard structure. Similar to the home on Leeds, since summer of 2018, this structure has been exposed to the elements without remedial work, and that's led to some deleterious consequences and additional structural failures. The rooms are open. They represent an attractive nuisance. There's mold and mildew, evidence of vermin activity, opening penetrations, missing AC units, et cetera. Open electrical joints, so-called repairs, miswired equipment, the use of extension cords in the rooms in lieu of fixed wiring by extended-stay tenants, so to speak, though it's not an extended-stay hotel, at least that was until all temporary certificates of occupancy were rescinded, loose flooring treatments, and site issues. Some of the presumed deficiencies for building numbers one, two, three, and four, structural load pathways, interior floors and ceilings, cladding, fenestration, mechanical, electrical plumbing, and health issues. There are divots atop the building's roof, particularly between the pool area and building two, as you can see on the right. It holds water. Column-to-roof connections are missing at three of the four buildings, which is a violation of the 1984, 1985 construction standards, Southern Building Code, Congress International Standards. How do we know this? Because if you recall, I know Chief Bits does, during Hurricane Ike, building one's roof peeled back like a sardine can, and there are no connections at the top of the columns to the roof proper. That area in there. Upper landings for staircase systems aren't secured to the balconies, and lower staircase landings, their slabs are independent of the building foundations and moving autonomously rather than in unison. These are some of the balconies in question. This is building four, which backed up to the church pavilion. It's got movement on this small slab here, which is not monolithic with that slab. It's also loose of the primary structure. This is building one after they started some forensics to determine if they could salvage the staircase system. If you look closely, this is upstairs on a balcony, and this is where you're supposed to have lag bolts or some type of fastening to the primary structure. That is missing. This picture isn't so good, but there are lentils or L braces that the treads are sitting on. This one's missing fasteners. These are not. Vertical and lateral movement of balconies has been observed over the last six months, and one touchstone or baseline that I've utilized is that the new guards, otherwise known as handrails, at the second levels of building two, three, and four, they had vertical elements placed to attach to the ceiling and to attach to the deck, because fastening to the columns was no longer sufficient. That has pulled away just since November of 2018. We've also got creeping and cracking of the brick veneer systems, and, actually, I'll show you a picture on the last point in a moment here. This is an example of the balconies giving way. This was a vertical element put in to connect to the roof, or underneath the roof deck to the balcony, and sorry, you can't see that, but it's pulled away already. When it was owned by Motel 6, there was a rather improvisational and illegal construction. They put in supports of four-by-four posts and a joist system, sistered up with the old joists, severely notched to get around impediments such as electrical and mechanical and plumbing, all without permitting, and then turned over the compound, if you will, to the new owners of Super 7. Like I said, they're drooping. They've been compromised by extended exposure to the elements, also the old packaged terminal AC units, the condensate is not carried away, as you see with the new construction, thereby also contributing to degradation of the decking. Exterior soffit treatments are failing, and even erosion of the grade adjacent to some buildings, particularly building two backing up to the church's parking lot, because they're not carrying away water or conveying stormwater away very well. Some to agree that the angle of repose of the bearing plane for the foundation grade beams have been severely impinged. Here, I'm wearing my S-kickers, not my good boots, and one kick, and I put that hole in the deck. Not a great picture, but severe cracking. Let's move to the interior. Many ceiling treatments are missing. Damage or compromise. Floor finishes failing. Even some significant trip hazards, and the accessible rooms that have failing floor-finish systems are no longer accessible, a violation of the Texas accessibility standards. Missing ceiling treatments. Also, this probably evinces severe leak in the drain, waste, and vent system. This is the top of shower. This is the shower surround. Here, we've got floor systems peeling up. There are opening penetrations, such as missing packaged terminal AC units, some brick veneers missing, including a brick lentils, and there's been significant repointing of mortared joints to disguise same. There are also unsecured rooms, which are typically broken door locks and mechanisms. Not a good picture. Cracking in the masonry. As I mentioned, missing AC units, others incorrectly wired, condensate also degrading balconies. There is a missing port, packaged terminal AC unit. There are rooms being leased next to this room, and we'll get into that later. From the outside, it doesn't appear necessarily that the AC unit's missing. There's the cover as I pulled it back. Some fine wiring, journeyman quality. Illicit electrical work related to the aforementioned improvisational, nonpermitted balcony-supporting and framing work resulting in additional cutting, notching, and hole-boring violations, open electrical joints throughout. We've got so-called wiring pairs, receptacle outlets that have been blanked off in lieu of replacing those receptacle outlets. Other receptacles aren't hot, and both of those last bullet points result in the guests utilizing even more extension cords in lieu of fixed wiring systems. Open electrical joint, but also importantly, what's missing, smoke detector. That's a pool electrical fixture. Sorry for the picture quality. It's actually pulling away from the fascia here, and a coat hanger was utilized to tether it to the structure in the past, but that has since given way. We've got open grounds, hot and neutral reversed, storage within dedicated access zones for electrical equipment, loose appurtenances, such as the light I just showed you. Electrical panels are here, storage in front, missing fasteners, open panel that won't close, the gutter is missing fasteners. This is low-volt structured wiring, but still indicative of how a lot of penetrations are made through ceiling systems and walls. Missing water closets, fancy name for a toilet. Others are loose of their moorings. That's a hygiene problem if they're not secured and not caulked. Other fixtures and components are not sealed to adjacent services, a violation of the plumbing code, missing tubs and showers. Some rooms are without hot water, and there are even open drain, waste, and vent system piping without P-traps, and of course, you can smell the sewage. One of the showers, this is under the manager's apartment, where there was a tub shower leak. Tailpiece, nice, non-listed piece of piping from the home center. As far as health, property is still not fully secured. It's closer to it, but not fully secured. For eight months, we went with some rooms not being secured unbeknownst to me. Rooms are riddled with mold throughout, evidence of water infiltration, insect infestation, and rooms are being utilized for extended stay. First day I was there, this is in the office area facing back to Joe Meyer's pre-owned, that was a two-foot-by-one-foot hole straight to the outside. Mold and mildew. Temporary fencing was finally put up in a couple stages, initially not enough and initially not secured. October 23rd, two and a half months after building one's temporary certificate of occupancy had been rescinded, there's a gentleman going into his room. Constant monitoring on the part of staff. Open room. You can see the door strike also. There's a problem there. Insect infestation. Mop heads being washed in the breakroom sink, rags adjacent, lunch dishes, and particularly apropos, a specs shopping cart. Mousetrap. Thanks for the warning, and there it is. That's the electrical room. Dirty linens were remaining on beds, significantly stained mattresses. This is once we finally started going through the rooms after we were on our fourth or fifth engineer, didn't get plans in, did not get a plan of action in of any substance. We finally started going into the rooms, and this is what we found. Those previously were rooms that were either occupied, and we tried to work with the owners, and we visited other rooms. Obviously, patently, they were taking us to the rooms that were something you could let without being too concerned. Linens, when attended to, are washing guest laundry room. We had to make an exception. If you recall, the two balcony stairs, one led to, in building four, to the staff laundry room. That wasn't safe to use, so they started to use the guest laundry room. I agreed with them on that for a temporary amount of time. Just want to dive in there. This is open sewage behind building three, which is the building that backs up to Jersey Village, to Champion Forest Baptist Church in Jersey Village, and landscaping that was not attended to. It's since been taken care of. Turns out, the motel was not responsible for this effluviant, but obviously, their maintenance personnel did not walk the property. This resulted from discharges from the church and their daycare or nursery obstructing the main. Additional structures, fencing in need of repair with many missing pickets. Ditto the dumpster screening. And pool barrier gaps, now addressed by chain and lock. I would have to monitor that every couple of days. We would have a chain lock put on, and then it would disappear. Until a month ago, the pool remained untreated. I appreciate that the ownership has taken care of that. So, this is an example of walking up to the pool and just seeing the gate free and clear The planned submittal of April 30, 2019, two copies are required, one provided by the owner, not a design professional, but the owner. The 2018 asbestos surveys only cover the exterior. They do not cover the interior work. The room-by-room assessment that is wanting, they claim was voluminous and comprehensive. It was not very specific. In fact, the room, one of those rooms 103, that was missing the AC unit on their comprehensive list of issues to address for each room, they didn't even write missing AC or repair AC. Applicable codes and local amendments are... In fact, the room, one of those rooms 103, that was missing the AC unit on their comprehensive list of issues to address for each room, they didn't even write missing AC or repair AC. Applicable codes and local amendments are missing from the plans. The plans are also eight-by-elevens, two sheets, illegible. They need to dispose of the AC condensate such that it's not a nuisance. They do want to rebuild the balconies now. We're finally there. I think we can take care of the AC condensate and carry that off to the landscaping, including the units upstairs. The wind speed is wildly incorrect at 115 ultimate wind speed. It should be about 131, which would be 103 basic. A soils report wasn't provided. We need that for some of the foundation issues and for the stairs where they connect to the buildings proper. This was new to me, but it shouldn't have been. The ownership bought this property in June 2018, knowing that approximately 50 out of 119 rooms were rentable at least for one year even before the property was purchased. So, they assumed it was okay with the city as long as those rooms were not rented, being a 69 out of the 119. His plan was to make them rentable from a cash flow generated by the existing business. Well, none of this, believe it or not, was ever told to staff. Staff, being me, was played. You cannot let a room next to a room where there's mold and mildew. You cannot let a room next to a room where there are opening penetrations, where doors are not secured, where ceilings are open, where they're missing plumbing fixtures, et cetera. I don't believe there are 50 rooms that can be lit there, and right now, it's zero. We covered this last month. If it has the following defects, it shall be deemed a substandard building. It's deteriorated, it's open. Balcony could collapse. Hurricane season's coming up. Or is here, almost? Not in conformity with the plumbing code, not in conformity with the electrical code, not in conformity with the building code, not structurally sound. Obsolescence is a good word. Dilapidated another. Gas connections do appear to be okay, though. And of course, it constitutes a menace, these structures to health or safety, including vermin, inadequate bracing, and conditions constituting attractive nuisance for minors and others. From our hotel motel code, tier-two properties who have a calls-for-service-room ratio of greater than one are considered a tier-two structure and can lose their certificate of occupancy. Here, over four months, is Super Seven, 21 calls. So first, I took Super Seven, 21 calls, 119 rooms times three, .529, that's not bad. Oh, wait. Purportedly, we've got 50 rooms to let. I don't think so. Even with that number, we're at 1.26. That's tier-two. Of course, Moonlight Inn's not doing much better, are they? Quality Inn, Palace Inn, all below one. A tier-one or tier-two hotel lodging license shall be revoked by the property standards board upon good cause. The decision on revocation shall be based on noncompliance with federal, state, and/or city codes and ordinances. I'll leave number two through five for the police department, fire department, emergency personnel. Also, number seven, there are uncorrected code violations on the property. Any questions?
All right, counsel, we're going to open up to questions for Christian.
Christian, what's the timeline? You know, that property has been a nuisance for as long as I can remember, but what is the timeline with this new owner and this process that you've started on here? Was it June of 18?
Late June of 2018. We will get an engineer. Can we start by pulling down a little bit of the soffit in Building One and Building Four under the balconies? We don't think there are problems at Building Three and Building Two. There are. Then a second engineer. Then another engineer, and things get drawn out and drawn out.
What prompted your involvement in June of 18?
The purchase of the property triggers a certificate of occupancy inspection just for a name change.
Okay, so ownership changed, new certificate of occupancy applied for, you start your inspections. Did the owners that purchased at Super Seven, did they come to you? Did they do due diligence with the city in terms of, in any way with the city? Did you have any involvement with the new owners prior to the purchase?
I did not.
Did anybody at the city?
Nobody to my knowledge.
Okay, so it's safe to say that there was probably a lack of due diligence in terms of codes, ordinances, and so forth. Another question. Since the facility lost its certificate of occupancy and is now reapplying, or whatever stage they're in, do they have to now meet the current codes, or are they still grandfathered on some of the older codes?
They'll be grandfathered for many of the older codes, but any new work will need to meet the latest codes. That said, part of my plan review comments, though, are to consider this extended stay and additional receptacle outlets will have to be provided, and we want to make sure that the AC condensate is carried to the landscaping when the balconies are rebuilt rather than draining directly onto the decking.
And when, I know you said, but when was the certificate of occupancy pulled or no longer valid?
Building One was pulled the first time we did a CO inspection, or maybe the second. The first time we did a CO inspection, I had multiple conversations with ownership about having somebody walk through the property, take care of any issues that may need to be addressed before we come in. It's not city staff role to create punch lists. They did not do so. Then, in July, we showed up again and revoked the TCO for Building One, except for a small portion at the end near the office and the office, for Building Four, which was to the far right, backing up to the pavilion of the church, and for one-third of Building Three adjacent and contiguous to Building Four. I allowed people, I granted a TCO for Building Two adjacent to the pool, and Building Three, save for that, adjacent to Building Four.
So, from your first visit in June of 18 to today, how much work has actually transpired? The new owners?
Only opening up the soffits and covering that opening in the wall in the business area, the one that was two feet by one feet backing up to Joe Meyer's.
So essentially, for the last 11 months, 10 months, there's no substantial work, not an effort to improve the property, no?
The effort was to keep city staff and our third-party consultants out of certain rooms.
Is there any indication that that's going to change? I mean, do you have any indication? Anything on the horizon gives us hope that the situation's going to get better?
I have here instruction documents, only one set, not the required two. The fire department's supposed to get a set, I'm supposed to get a set. I have the plan of action that we wanted for six, seven, eight, nine months now, but it's not that comprehensive. This appears to be more like maintenance and cleaning for the rooms. Nothing really, really specific. And I have two eight-by-elevens for the balcony reconstruction, illegible, even with my readers in a magnifying glass. The comment letter is almost completed. We need an asbestos survey for the interior rooms. No, here we are. I have 22 comments that will likely be released on Wednesday.
So I get the feeling you don't see that there's a serious attempt going to be made at any kind of remediation or remodeling?
We will see what, we'll see when the responses are made to my comments, if anything has finally gotten through.
Christian, I see here in the ordinance that the proposal is to provide the owner with 90 days to be able to remedy all of this. Do you believe that based on the work that's necessary, that 90 days is a sufficient amount of time when taking into account possible weather events, things of that nature this time of year?
If they let design professionals handle the permitting and the entire process, and a competent general contractor to follow through, then yes. But they've essentially been relying on city staff and obfuscation.
Do you have copies, or can I look at their eight-to-nine-page proposal? You have copies, or can I look at that book for a minute?
Do I have a copy of?
Of the proposal they gave you? I just want to see how much they went into on that. Did they give you this whole book, or just?
The whole book.
Okay. Christian, did you get this book after the letter we sent on April 26?
Correct.
All right. I'm going to call upon the lien holders, mortgagers, or owners of the property present to give them an opportunity to be heard and to address the nuisance issues as they relate to the minimum standards, including the scope of work and financial capabilities of repairing the structure located at 16884 Northwest Freeway in Jersey Village. Are there any lien holders, mortgagers, or owners of the property present? Come forward, sir. Can you say your name and who you're representing?
Yep. Let's see if this raises up. I may have to lean down. My name is Luke Bishara. I'm an attorney. I represent the owner of the property, which is Jersey Village Lodging LLC, and I have been engaged to address the issues and concerns of the City of Jersey Village, as well as those raised by Mr. Summers. And I'm prepared to speak in response to and answer any questions the council may have.
You have nothing prepared? You just want to know our questions?
No, I'm ready to give a statement if you'll have me. I didn't know if there's anything preliminary you'd like to have.
Go ahead.
My client recently hired me to address the situation, to resolve the issues and concerns that Mr. Summers has raised, as well as the City of Jersey Village. My client wants to be a good corporate citizen in the community, wants to do things right and make the folks of this community proud, happy, the council satisfied with the progress that's gone on. I think it's important to take a look at the history of the property so that you can put it into perspective about where we're at. This property was originally flagged as a Motel Six. It was owned by corporate. My client purchased the property from corporate. Now, based upon everything I've heard from Mr. Summers, it appears there was lax oversight, to say the least, regarding what was going on at the property at the time. Did my client conduct sufficient due diligence to determine the character of the property? Based on what I'm hearing from Mr. Summers, no. However, my client has been working diligently to rectify the situation. A couple points that I must raise respectfully, but as due-order points to preserve privileges and objections of that nature. First, the situation here, calling on for a determination, and I believe the language set forth in Mr. Summers' April 26 letter is, this letter's to inform all interested party of the city staff's initiation of condemnation proceedings for the as-yet-to-be-completely-secured and placarded and/or demolished substandard structures. This type of situation has been determined by the courts not to be appropriate for a resolution in this particular type of hearing, with all due respect. It's a judicial determination as to whether or not a structure qualifies under the law under these circumstances. So, I do reserve that objection, although we're here in good faith to work with the city, and I hope it does not come to that. Second, I would note a number of these items that Mr. Summers has testified about require true expert testimony, in many cases, coming straight from professional engineers. Now, I recognize Mr. Summers' experience, his expertise, his knowledge, and I appreciate it. He's done a fine job for the city. Some of these things are simply beyond the province of someone who does not have that specialized training, which is precisely why the City of Jersey Village has required my client to obtain plans from professional engineers, which my client has done at the request of the city and specifically Mr. Summers. My client's version of events is a bit different from what Mr. Summers has relayed, and I'm not casting spursions on Mr. Summers. I'm just saying that maybe he doesn't have full and complete information. That's why I'm here before the city to provide it. Initially, when Mr. Summers came out, he raised an issue related to the structural soundness of the second-floor balconies. These buildings, and we describe them as four buildings, but from the pictures, you can see it's really probably just two, two detached structures. But Mr. Summers came out and pointed out that he did not believe, based upon his physical inspection, that the walkways were structurally sound. Whether or not that's the case, it's difficult really for a layperson to tell. Nevertheless, my client went and engaged a professional engineer, in this case, a structural engineer, to evaluate it. Of course, forensic testing had to be undertaken in order to make that determination, because no single person can walk up with their eyes and just say, "I'm going to stomp a hole in the ground and see what happens." Now, of course, we're not happy with that either, but we did obtain a professional engineer who came out, conducted that testing, and provided us with a plan of attack to remedy the situation. It's my understanding from my client that once that was presented to Mr. Summers, he changed his mind on exactly what would be required before we could proceed forward with substantial investment in the property. And again, remember, my client bought this from corporate, Motel Six. My client did not buy this to watch the property deteriorate, did not buy it to watch it sit vacant, did not buy it for any other reason, but to turn it into a Class One facility that everyone can be proud of. That's the point of the investment. We need some assistance from the city, and in particular, from Mr. Summers, to achieve that. So, we went out at his request, procured a structural engineer, and obtained a plan of attack on that. The city wasn't happy. City initially verbally agreed to let us fix one or two buildings at a time so that we could keep the remaining buildings open. That was later changed on us. And then, we were told we needed to fix all four of the walkways to all four buildings before anything could happen. That's fine, but we need some consistency in our instruction from the city, in particular, from the building inspector. Tell us what we need to do so that we can get it done. If there's something that's missing, let us know, and we will get it done. Now, I'm not here to point the finger at Mr. Summers. I haven't been here for all of the communications. There may be, in fact, a communication barrier up to this point in time. There will not be any longer. The clients engaged me. I will facilitate and work directly with Mr. Summers. He was pleasant as can be before we started. I was a bit surprised in response to the council's question whether or not he had any hope, and I believe it was you, sir, that had asked, "Do you have any hope, Mr. Summers, that the ownership is taking this seriously and wants to improve it?" I had fully expected, based upon my conversation prior to the hearing, that Mr. Summers would say, "I had a great conversation with an attorney that came down from Fort Worth, Texas at a very high cost and expense of the ownership, and told me he was looking forward to working with me and that we were going to get this resolved, facilitated." That is, in fact, what I told Mr. Summers, and that's my intent to do that. So again, I'm not trying to throw stones. I haven't been involved in the process, what I'm telling you, some of which is relayed to me from my client. But I can tell you what will happen in the future, and it will be no more of this. We will work hard and make sure that whatever Mr. Summers needs in order to evaluate our proposals, he obtains, and then we do what we need to do to make sure that this property meets the satisfaction of Mr. Summers, and more specifically, complies with the requirements of the City of Jersey Village's codes. We have hired another engineer. We have hired another engineer. We have hired a contractor. The book that I believe, is it Mr. Singleton, Councilman Singleton, had requested, it's quite substantial. We have a separate, at the request of, well, it's, it's about 160 pages. I don't know if you saw all of it, but it goes through every single room with a checklist. That is the proposal that was prepared by the contractor, not my client, but by a third-party contractor who's engaged a number of hotel renovations and remodels throughout the state of Texas. Now, if there are some items missing, we welcome that input from Mr. Summers, but we are attempting to do it. This is not some short shrift, half-step stuff that we've provided. We want to be good neighbors. We want to be in compliance with what the city requires, and not just that, what Mr. Summers would like, so long as it's within reason. There was a letter that was submitted to us on April 26. It was sent by certified mail. I highly doubt that it was received prior to our April 29 application that we had submitted. It's just simply not enough time for a letter to go certified mail from Dallas or from Houston, Jersey Village, up to Dallas and then have us get it back out. This plan had been in process for quite some time after numerous negotiations with Mr. Summers about what his concerns were, and it does take some amount of time in order to put this together. Again, these are engineered plans that we have to come up with. We have to get a plan of attack from an engineer, particularly when you're talking about structural items, and we've done that. Mr. Summers expressed to me prior to the hearing, his concern was that the ownership, the new ownership, was trying to do this on a shoestring budget. I didn't really get into detail with him, but from his presentation, I think that he has been disappointed with the fact that the ownership originally planned to finance the renovations of the remaining rooms from the revenues generated from the rooms that were available. That is not the case now. My client's prepared to invest what it needs to invest to get this property into a condition to the satisfaction of the council and Mr. Summers. Touching on a point that the council raised, is 90 days enough time? Frankly, it's not. We're still in the process of trying to obtain basic permits. We have never once received a permit from the city to do anything. Even after we submitted plans to repair those, those balconies from a structural engineer, we didn't get approval to fix them. If we are not issued permits from the city, and specifically Mr. Summer, then there's no way that we can complete any repairs. So it's a catch-22 here. We want to work. We want to get it done. I understand that Mr. Summers is doing his job, and I plan to assist him with whatever he needs from my side, but in order for us to commence, much less complete them, we have to get permits to do so. My client is not just sitting by saying they don't want to do anything. They have been working to do it. There are, have been some deficiencies, I'm certain, and that's to be expected, but again, I'm here to facilitate the process, expedite the process, and get it done. With that said, as I mentioned, 90 days is a very short time for the amount of renovations that Mr. Summers has requested my client to complete. I think a much more reasonable time for that would be in phases, and I would invite Mr. Summer and I to visit with, about that issue, to see what we can do, because a phasing of a project of this magnitude is particularly appropriate. You can't fix it all at once. And again, it wasn't on my client's shift or ownership that these problems happened. My client purchased this property without having conducted sufficient due diligence, but the dilapidation and deterioration about which you've heard didn't happen over the course of a year. Sidewalks or balcony ways didn't collapse over the course of a year. My client wants to be a part of the solution. They inherited the problem. They purchased the problem. We ask that you give them a chance to fix it in a reasonable amount of time, in an orderly fashion, so that everyone on the council, in the building department, in the community, is happy with the results. And I don't know that we're in a position, as we sit here today, because again, this is the first day I've met Mr. Summers, but I, I know that we'll have a great working relationship. He seems like a nice fellow. But we're going to need some time to put together a plan. I would ask the council to table this issue until the next meeting, so that Mr. Summers and I have adequate opportunity to meet and confer and to develop a game plan, a realistic game plan that we can provide you in terms of what work needs to be done and in what phases, and anything Mr. Summers needs between now and that next meeting, I will be on the spot to make sure that he gets it.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
Questions from council?
That was a lot of information, and I had, had a lot of responses, but let me give you my observations.
Yes, sir.
To purchase that type of property with the lack of due diligence?
Yes.
Is, I, I kind of use that as indicative as, as to how the owner's going to handle that property from the time of purchase on. You shouldn't, not, to spend money on something like that without due diligence is silly, stupid. The, the comment, and you reiterated that the owner's intent was to use the revenues from 50 rooms to rehab all 119 rooms. I've never seen a business plan like that that actually works. So from that, it tells me that somebody didn't do their due diligence, somebody had a flawed business plan, and frankly, I don't know if we've seen any indication that anything has changed, other than you being here at great expense. So I guess what I'm saying is the actions speak much louder than you. And I can, I can tell you one thing, whatever you do at that property, Christian will make sure it's done right, and I, I think we have faith and confidence in him that it will. So in all of this, my comment is that I don't care what you say. I don't care what the owners say. It, it's what you do. It's the actions that we see. That property has been a nuisance to Jersey Village for years, and it continues to be a nuisance. And if it's your desire to make it something different, it starts now. It should have started the day that the owners purchased the property, not 10 months later. And I hope that the owners are as dedicated as you are to see that through. But frankly, you know, your actions will, will say everything.
Thank you to respond to your points, and I'm not sure if there were questions, but it felt like you wanted me to respond to something.
Conversation.
Conversation, and I, I'm not being disrespectful when I say it. When you're dealing with corporate Motel 6, you'd like to assume that they maintain their properties as what would be expected, and in this case, it was a mistake.
Once again, I go back to my original comment.
Yes. I'm with you on that.
You, you don't need to explain that. It, it's, you're making it worse than, than I made it sound.
Let me, let me let other council members ask, does anybody else have any questions?
Absolutely. To piggy a little bit off of that, you know, open records requests are free, and I think an open records request of the city on this property would have gleaned you a lot of information that the owners would have known that they needed to do more investigation. Very, a free email would have gone a long way, and he probably would have reconsidered purchasing the property. What, when were you retained by your client?
I was not retained prior to the purchase. I can assure you that, because I would have conducted the diligence that you have suggested, sir. My client retained me, I, I've had a relationship with a number of the principals behind the client, but on, with respect to this particular entity, I was retained probably within the last two weeks, I believe, and since that time, I have reviewed documents, begun the process of determining what we need to have happen. Unfortunately, I was unable to reach out to Mr. Summers previously, not from a lack of desire on my part. I've been in a jury trial for the last week. In fact, I was in it this morning, over five hours away. So it's been a very, very long day for me, but I'm happy to be down here and I appreciate the opportunity. I only raise that to you, Councilman Singleton, because if I had had a little more opportunity, I would have loved to have visited with Mr. Summers in advance, and I just didn't have enough time prior to today, but I look forward to the opportunity to do so.
Appreciate it. I think with that short time you've been brought on compared to the extensive process this has been, you can understand where I have issues with the owner's intent to follow through and make sure it becomes a standard building.
Absolutely. And I respect and appreciate everyone's skepticism and concern, as you should, anytime you've been in these situations, but from my discussions with the principals of my client, I can assure you that we wish to act diligently and swiftly and completely to address the issues that Mr. Summers has raised, and I believe in all sincerity, my client intends to deploy whatever resources necessary to do so.
Well, we won't be tabling this, but at least I don't favor that, but I think you'll have an opportunity.
Okay. And I would reiterate on that, 90 days for what we're talking about here is not something of a schedule that would allow it to be done, in my opinion. I'm not a construction professional, but I would like the opportunity, prior to the council setting such a deadline, if you choose to do so, to visit with Mr. Summer, the engineers, and the contractors, so that we can present a plan to Mr. Summer in turn, possibly to the council in full, so you understand what the process is, because there is a sequence that must be done on construction projects such as this. We can't do everything at once. It, it's just not physically possible to do those things, and so I'd, I'd ask for the council to take that into account as you consider today. I'm not asking for a lot of time. I'm not asking for you to say no to the request. What I'm asking you to do is give Mr. Summers and I the opportunity to confer so that we can come up with a realistic game plan that satisfies all stakeholders.
Thank you. Drew, you have a question?
I just, just wanted to know, you speak that 90 days isn't, isn't enough, and in a comprehensive plan that was sent to Mr. Summers and the, and the city, is there a timeline roughly, maybe not by day, but of time to make the necessary repairs?
I'm not sure, and I'm going to check that for you, but one thing that we must do before we even commence, right? I can't complete until I can, I commence, and I cannot commence until I get permits from the city. And so we have to get the approval from Mr. Summer and the department, rightfully so, before we can deploy the plan. And I want to make sure that we give the engineers and the architects the appropriate amount of time so that they can do the designs to ensure compliance with the different code requirements, including, for example, wind speed resistance for roofs and things of that nature. Again, we are in a zone where it takes more than casual planning in order to build a structurally sound building.
Is there a reason why, since all of this started back last year, that the owner has not been able to get the engineers in there necessary to evaluate the condition?
We do. We have had engineers come in, and we have submitted plans over to Mr. Summers.
Referring to the small, the little tiny print plans that Mr. Summers showed?
No, I believe those were on the very last ones, and the, the actual plans that could be used, I, I'm sure I can get them over a reproduced, full-sale drawing, construction drawings. We can do that. We can also get over the PDFs that have, you know, the, the most minute detail built into those files. I'm sure you've seen drawings of that sort. But no, those are not the first plans that we've submitted. We submitted plans initially from a structural engineer related to the walkways, which were the initial point of contention from Mr. Summers. He pointed that out, said we needed to get it fixed. We engaged a structural engineer to address that issue that had been raised. Along the way, as we've gone through the process, Mr. Summers' criticisms have expanded, and again, I'm not knocking Mr. Summers for it, but I'm saying he's broadened the scope of what he's requested be completed, and every time you broaden the scope, if it's an engineering requirement, then we have to engage another engineer to address the new issue that Mr. Summers has raised. Again, not knocking him, but we've had an expanded scope since we started this process, and it's been ever-expanding. I'd like to get the, the opportunity to sit with Mr. Summers and with the engineers and the architects, whatever design professionals we need, to make sure we address those concerns. But we need some time to do that. Not a whole lot of time, but I would respectfully request this issue be tabled to next council meeting, and I'm not going to come back before you and say, "Hey, I sat up here at the lectern while you guys were on the dais, and I told you I was going to do these things, and here I am next month," or whenever it may be, "and nothing's changed." I can assure you, you will have results. You will have progress. You may not have completion just yet, but that's because it's not a possibility. I have to get approval from the city with the plans, whether they be from an engineer and architect, so that we can get the permit issued. Once the permit's issued, deploy the contractors and we're working. You will see tangible progress carry soon, but I do need to get with Mr. Summers to make sure we've addressed all of his concerns from the design professional standpoint.
All right, we're moving along a little bit. Anybody have any more questions?
Just, just real quick. Christian, you, have you received engineered drawings and so forth? Because it, it sounds like you received them after each inspection. Go ahead.
I've talked to multiple engineers on site and expected to receive plans. Only the penultimate, the second-to-last engineer, the ownership attempted to submit, they had cited the 2012 codes, and they'd sent the permit clerk or myself an email. That's not a submittal. That doesn't constitute a submittal.
There is a engineering report addressing the balconies, which has been submitted. It was the illegible drawings that Christian referred to earlier. It was reduced to an eight-and-a-half by 11, and you really can't see it. It, it basically says, it's, it's a, signed by a structural engineer and says, gives general directions that the contractors to go to the site and make certain things based upon visual observation. It is, it's kind of the generic what you see, but it's, it's, because the plans are on eight-and-a-half by 11 and were received by facts that are just illegible, so that we need a better copy of those.
Is that why the permit wasn't issued, because it didn't meet your requirements in the?
This is the first submittal. Still, the wind load is wrong. It does say 2018 IBC here. It says 2015 here. The engineer has ignored point loads on guards, guards or handrails to be done by others. We still need the concentrated loads and the uniform loads shown on there. I need my 50 pounds per square foot or per lineal foot.
So it didn't, so basically, it didn't meet the requirements in order to obtain a permit?
The best I can tell, given the size of the font, yes, sir. But this is the first submittal that we've counted as a submittal, though it was only one set of quote-unquote "plans," not enough for me to provide to the fire department.
So there, there are no large-size plans that have been submitted, just the eight-and-a-half by?
I'm sure they can get me the PDFs or electronic. I just thought I'd go ahead and do a plan review, try to knock that out. I was hoping before this meeting for the applicant, but it'll be sometime this week, I've developed about 22 comments.
And this is all developed just within the last couple of weeks?
Since the 30th of April.
Okay.
29th and 30th.
So bottom line, Christian, what we're getting here is owner's representative is telling us that the interaction between him and the city has been faulty, and it's pretty much the city's fault that he hasn't been able to remodel and remediate his property. I'm hearing from you that that's not the case. I'm also questioning whether you really have an expert hired if they don't know the proper way to fix something, and what I'm seeing is that they're doing Band-Aids instead of really accomplishing any kind of remodeling. Is that a case?
The earliest discussions were more about ameliorating. I think this engineer, though generic drawings and of course illegible, can't read them, this is a plan to actually rebuild the balconies, but I need soil reports. I need to correct wind load. Staff is willing to work with phasing the projects. I understand that ownership and their general contractor will likely want to rebuild all the exterior balconies and to do so properly, and then tackle some rooms. I'm open to that. Where I have been putting my foot down is in the applicants dragging their feet and going through multiple engineers, not getting enough sufficient plans, and not themselves phasing, because I never had a plan of action.
But what I'm trying to get to is the reason for nothing or almost nothing having been done in 10 months, and we're supposed to expect that something is going to be done in three more months. in three more months.
Exactly. So at six, at five, six, seven, eight, nine months, the threshold does change a little bit because I'm not seeing any activity.
But?
Primarily a plan of action. You guys walk through, you hire the appropriate personnel, you determine the problems with each room, and you provide me a pathway forward. We're open to doing that, to phasing the project. But do not give me piecemeal plans.
This is the reason they weren't getting the permitting?
They never submitted a quote-unquote "full" set of plans, if we can refer to it, until April 29th.
I've had conversations with you before about a lot of projects, and I know one of your pet peeves is when you're utilized as a general contractor. It's not your job to come up with a punch list, as you mentioned earlier. It's not, that's not your job. And I think that's what I'm personally gathering from this, is you have this property that's derelict and it's falling apart, and they basically came to you and with very substandard plans and are kind of relying on you to create, what do we need? That's not your job.
Can you line us up? Yes, Mr. Mayor, can you line us up with the appropriate designers, the appropriate architects, the engineers, who's a builder? Can you tell us, can you give us a report of each room? I'm not giving you a report.
Have they sent you a bill for your general contract?
If I could, if you could complete the public hearing, there is a proposed ordinance in your agenda packet that's been posted online that effectively provides for a plan of action for the property owner to come back to city council in regular monthly reports to give the status. But I think we need to complete the public hearing before we go through the ordinance and agenda packet.
And in that vein, I will now call to order this public hearing. Anyone desiring to speak on behalf of or against the recommended action shall give his name and address, and will be given five minutes to present information during the meeting. The purpose of today's hearing is to provide for the owner or owner's representatives of the property located at 16884 Northwest Freeway in Jersey Village, Texas, to appear and show cause, number one, why such buildings or structures should not be declared to be substandard, and two, why the owner should not be ordered to repair, vacate, or demolish the buildings or structures. The burden is on the owner, lien holder, or mortgagie to demonstrate the scope of the work required to comply with the ordinance and the time it will take to perform the work. Is anybody desiring to speak? Anybody from the public desiring to speak? There being no one desiring to speak, I will now close the public hearing held to provide the owner or owner's representatives of the property located at 16884 Northwest Freeway in Jersey Village, Texas, to appear and show cause, number one, why such buildings or structures should not be declared to be substandard, and two, why the owner should not be ordered to repair, vacate, or demolish the buildings or structures. Call upon the lien holders, mortgagies, or owners of the properties for any closing comments.
And Mayor, at this point, I suspect the attorney does not have a cop, you did not look on the agenda, you do not have a copy of the proposed ordinance that city council is considering tonight?
I do now, sir. I have a copy of the agenda.
In addition to the agenda, there's an agenda packet that's online, which would have included?
I think we had a lot of people take them because
Right.
I don't believe there's any left back there.
Yeah.
I'll be brief. I appreciate everyone's, except for me?
I appreciate the attention and patience of all the council. I appreciate the efforts of Mr. Summers. I know everyone here is working hard to make sure that the city of Jersey Village is a great place to live, and we've got great lodging accommodations and such.
Speaking directly to Councilman Wibenhorst, I hope I pronounced your name correctly, I'm not blaming the city. There have been communication barriers, I mean literally barriers in some respects there. And there has been, from my client's perspective, an ever-changing goal line in terms of what we need to do. We started out first initially with the balconies, and I understand why that was a top priority to Mr. Summers, and it expanded from there. That's what I mean. My client remains willing, ready, able to get all of this stuff done. We do need a plan of action. I look forward to working with Mr. Summers to do it. I do think it's premature to take a vote on this particular ordinance. I haven't had a chance to review it in full, but I think we'd be in a much better position to give insight and guidance for the decision of the council after Mr. Summers and I have had the opportunity to visit with the design professionals as well as each other to, so that I can present to him through the construction and design professionals, a plan of attack that includes phasing, sequencing of the project. There are things that have to be done first, as Mr. Summers acknowledges, and I want to make sure we address those key points, those fundamentals first. In other words, this isn't the case here, but you don't put on the roof before you pour the foundation, right? We've got it. You put the foundation down, then you plum it out, then you put the walls on, then you put the roof, then you do the interior. There's a sequencing that must be done, even on a project in a renovation. And we need to determine what that is through the design and contracting professionals. And we're not in a position, and we haven't been able to provide the city, either through Mr. Summers or myself, what that plan is. I will tell you, based on my experience, I represent a lot of construction clients, I've been involved in construction for a long time myself, that 90 days for a project of this scope is ambitious, to say the least. We want to get this done right. I know that's what the council ultimately desires. We want it done quickly, too, expeditiously. But you don't want it slapped together. You want a good quality product at the end of the day. Let us provide that to you. Give us an adequate opportunity to confer with Mr. Summers to get you that plan of attack, so that when we're five years down the road, we've got a product that still looks great, still standing, not something that we rushed to put together, that in retrospect, we should have spent some more time planning. I know the council and the city at large have been patient with my client up to this point in time, and we appreciate that. We do. This property had far more problems with my client anticipated when it was purchased, and really probably what anyone would anticipate from a nationally flagged corporate franchise hotel, motel. This is not the type of property I would have expected to have seen from them either. My client is in conversations and has a tentative agreement with the Choice brand of hotels, particularly these are going to be like Econolodge Choice and things of that nature, where they presented us with a property improvement plan for the benefit of council, forgive me if you already know what that is. A property improvement plan is something that a national flag hotel presents anytime you want to convert over and run under their franchise, whether you're building or converting, whatever it may be. It's their own internal list of improvements that must be done to meet the specs of the franchise. And honestly, they are higher standards than what most municipalities or other governing jurisdictions provide because they're protecting brand integrity. I'm not going to say I've had the opportunity to review all of the requirements of your city's codes yet, but in my experience, these property improvement plans that come from the national franchisers well exceed what you'd expect. I think you're going to be very happy with the product if you give us the opportunity to get it done. Please allow us the opportunity to get it designed properly. Let us work with the building official, Mr. Summers, to address your concerns at the outset, so that we can get this taken care of. We, there's a new level of urgency and earnest in what my client will be doing. And I'll be back again to see you folks, God willing, and update you on the status. And I hope to be standing here, and I know I'll be standing here, reporting favorable news to you, because when people call me to fix problems, that's what I do. And I'm going to make sure that the problems that this city has with this particular lodging facility are addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Can I move on to item D2?
Going to consider ordinance number 2019-11, finding structures at 16884 Northwest Freeway, Jersey Village, Texas, 77040, Res B1, Northwest Village Business Park RP. The property to be substandard, a public nuisance ordering Jersey Village Lodging LLC or the true owners of the property to abate the substandard and dangerous structures on the property, authorizing the city to demolish the structures on the property if the owner fails to abate the substandards and dangerous structures on the property, authorizing the city to assess a lien against the property for the cost of the demolition, and making other findings and provisions related there to Christian Summers, building official.
Sure. What can we add at this point, though? A performance bond, perhaps?
Yeah. Let me just refer you to the form ordinance that's been presented to you. We would, I would suggest that we do a couple of things to the form. It's based on Chapter 214 of the Texas Local Government Code, which has different standards for whether the repair is going to take place in, within 90 days or more than 90 days. And so we base this ordinance upon the repairs being done within the 90 days. I would suggest that Article, Section 2A should be deleted, because it had to do with if the property owner didn't show up and ask for more than 30 days to repair the property. So Section 2A should be deleted. Section 2, Jersey Village Lodging has appeared before council and has requested more than 30 days to repair the property. City council may still find that the property is dilapidated based upon the evidence that it received. The first real timetable that was provided for the ordinance starts in 2B. It was a fairly aggressive schedule that require, well, I think that timetable is probably okay. It just said that within 10 days, the property would be vacated and secured by fence. Section 2C, the building shall be repaired. The property owners indicated it may take more than 90 days. I would, I think that council could put, if you put more than 90 days, like if you permitted them 120 days or 180 days, the effect of that is under Chapter 214, you have to hear monthly progress reports for the status of the repairs on the property from the owner. Since we already provided for those a little later, I have no problem with council extending the time to repair the property to more than 90 days. The next timetable that is, the ordinance provided that the owner would provide certain reports to the city by May 24th in order for it to assess the property. The property owner may want, request more than 10 days to get those reports. I would think 30 days might be reasonable. The reports that were requested was a written mold assessment by a licensed professional engineer or mold assessor, that's actually a licensed occupation under the Texas occupations code. That date could be extended. The written asbestos survey by a licensed professional engineer, that date could be extended to the same date. And a roof inspection by a licensed professional engineer or experienced roof inspector. In other words, to try to assess what is the condition of those major elements of the structure that were discussed. And then a complete set of construction documents and a plan of action by a date certain. Again, a 30 to 45-day period would probably be a reasonable time for that. If that is adjusted, the owner should, what we had proposed was that the owner would submit the applications for permits by June 4th. I think that it takes, you wouldn't expect that the permits applications would be pulled for probably two weeks after you would want your reports due, and then that the city would issue the permits as soon as they reasonably could, but that work would start on those permits within 10 days. The ordinance, so I think that the key dates to consider, especially to accommodate the owner based upon what I heard tonight, would be to extend the dates from May 24th to recommend that those be probably around June 1st to June 13th, and then to have the June 4th date extended to 10 days after that, what council determines is a reasonable date for the reports to be obtained. That would be my recommendation, and I will defer to Christian if he wants to comment.
Scott, I have a question on, if we extended it past 90 days, you said the owners would be required to give us a monthly update.
Yes, that's correct.
Would that monthly update be compared against a corrective action plan or a plan of action from the owners?
Yeah, that, I would expect that council would want to, that's what the owner would do, and certainly if the owner was having problems with the building official, council would hear about that in your monthly reports. So it basically, you become the public forum of what progress is being made on the repair of the public nuisance.
So? Action if we deem that the progress isn't going according to expectations.
And city council has the authority to levy a civil penalty and to take actions to try to collect a civil penalty.
The report's already in there, and I, I appreciate the feedback, Scott. I like to propose that we would give them 180 days under Section C. We can always amend the ordinance based on the reports each month. And then under F, for all these May 24th dates, changing those to June 13th, because if staff receives that report by June 13th, they'll be ready and prepared for the council meeting in June on the 17th. And then changing the applications for permits 10 days later to June 24th for item G. And again, for the owner, all this, this is our initial plan, but we can adjust as necessary if they suddenly start work and making improvements as they promise.
James, I agree wholeheartedly. That's exactly my suggestion as well. I think those timelines are doable. I think it provides them with ample time to show us that they're serious about doing this. I'm not optimistic it'll happen, but nonetheless, it's a timeframe that's certainly doable.
There's still discussion going on, so.
And for the public's concerns, Section 3 blatantly states that if they fail to meet the requirements and the dates in this ordinance, then we can demolish the property or fine them $1,000 a day.
So we have the suggestion from James Singleton for those dates. Madam Secretary, did you, did you understand what James wrote down, what we're proposing for our dates?
I believe that we have them written down, Scott. Do you have them, too? Did you write down the dates, too?
Yes.
We?
Okay.
And we'll put those in the ordinance. There's two other typographical errors in the ordinance. We'll correct for your signature tonight. In Section 2, F1, I left out the word "mold" in front of "assessor." It should be a "mold assessor." And in Section 5, the third line, or ordinances, should be deleted. I don't know how that showed up when I was typing.
In Section 2B, correct that wording in that last phrase, "and the building shall be, remain vacated." The word "B" needs to come out of there.
Okay. Thank you.
One other thing, on 2B, we're still leaving the 10 days for vacation and fencing. Is that right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so that date on 2B is going to be May 24, or is it going to be June 13?
No. I was suggesting that we replace May 24th with June 13th, anywhere in the document.
Oh, it's May 23.
2B is actually May 23, and I think we should require 10 days vacation.
Okay. So everyone's in agreement? So I'm looking for a motion on the ordinance?
Folks, I didn't get to speak on this issue. It was called and was never called to speak. That's a fact.
We've, go ahead.
All due respect, I'm not trying to cut you off, but the... All due respect, I'm not trying to cut you off, but the building inspector and I were talking. I would suggest, and I believe he will confirm, that on F, Subpart 4, we're requesting 60 days there, and here's the reason why. Based upon Items 1 through 3, those feed into the engineered and architect plans and the plan of action, so we can sequence it. And I believe Mr. Summers is in agreement with me that we need a little bit longer time on that one component, so we can get the plan properly reviewed, sequenced, and deployed into action.
May I add anything? With one caveat, that we actually have an architectural firm lead the design of this project, hire an engineer, and also have the trades report to them as well as the general I heard the term architect. We need an architect involved. We need more design professionals involved in lieu of the ownership to work with city staff. And then, I'd be open to 45 to 60 days and eventually phasing the project.
So, you're proposing for Section F, Subsection 4, instead of May 24th, we're talking June, July 15th, 60 days.
And then, to make that the same date as the application in G, make July 15th the same day that you would get the plan of action and the permit applications.
So, G would also be July 15th.
Right. I think that would be consistent.
All right. Okay, I think we've got all of our dates, and I think we are. Go ahead.
Christian, or, you know, we're trying to develop a plan that, that works for the city and shows good faith to the owners on part of the city. Do we agree with what we've just discussed? We're on the same page? The city, the owners?
I think so. I think so.
And the owners?
Did we go with 45 days or 60 days on F4?
Because I don't want to hear 45 days for now that the city was unreasonable and didn't provide ample time and didn't, didn't do their due diligence.
They need to secure an architect. The architect needs to see what the engineer's doing, and they need to figure out a pathway forward, and they need to get the testing done pronto.
So, the timelines we presented, at this point, the city and the owners concurred that.
Barring a force majeure event such as a hurricane, yes. I can't predict things like that, but.
I wish you could, but. That's right.
I'd be on the news.
All right, so.
It seems like a reasonable timeline from my perspective, and I believe the building inspectors barring some unforeseen event.
So, I'm looking for a motion to, on this ordinance.
I move that we approve ordinance 2019-11 as adjusted by the city attorney.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Saying none, all those in favor? Opposed, abstention, motion carries.
Okay, we'll talk soon. We'll get it done.
Okay, can move on to Item E, Presentation of Employee of the Month, Austin Bliss.
Mayor and councilors, I think we need to give her another award for staying this long into the meeting. Rain, come on up. Mayor and councilors, tonight is my honor to present Rain Herzog the, with the employee of the month for May of 2019. During the past couple of months, dispatches had some growing pains. They've moved out of their dispatch center into temporary location, so new floors and desks could be installed. During this time, they lost an employee and had an open position. When they were able to move back into the dispatch center, another dispatcher went out to do an unexpected medical leave. All this to say, Rain has been instrumental in her part of keeping the division viable and strong during these times. Having been down one employee is manageable, but two employees is extremely difficult. Yet, the division is still functioning. Rain has also found time to continue covering shifts, still finding time to rest, interviewing new hires, placing perspective new hire in background, and on her days off, she's found time in between coming to work to help out, to taking, helping bring meals to the person that experienced the unexpected medical leave, cleaning their home, taking care of animals, running errands, helping out with kids, and so much more. So, that goes way beyond anything just being a supervisor requires. This shows that Rain is committed to work and really does care for her staff. Not many employees would take time on their days off to take care of their team like she does. So, it's with great honor that I present to you the May 2019 Employee of the Month. Rain, congratulations.
Thank you so much for sitting here. Congratulations. Thank you so much for your service. You did an awesome job.
Citizens who have signed a card and wish to speak to City Council will be heard at this time. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Acts, unless the matter, unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda, the, the city staff and city council members are prevented from discussing the subject and may respond with only statements of factual information or existing policy. Citizens are limited to five minutes for their comments to City Council. First card I have is Susan Edwards.
I didn't even have a chance to take a sip of water. So, I'm Susan Edwards. I live at 16001 Jersey Drive. And mainly, I just wanted to thank Justin Ray for his leadership and service to our city. Good, he's still here. And I also want to, oh, and I want to wish him the best in his future endeavors. And I want to do the same for our new mayor and our re-elected council members and our new council member.
Thank you. Brandon Harbury.
My writing's terrible.
You have my handwriting, too.
So, I was here last month along with the homeowner on the property at 15421 Leeds Lane. I'm here on behalf of the lien holder, AmeriHome Mortgage. And I just wanted to give an update on the status of where things stand from my client's perspective. So, the homeowner was present and stated he would secure the property and take all the steps necessary to effectuate the demolition of the property. He didn't secure the property, and there's currently mixed messages. Apparently, as of sometime today, he started demolishing part of it, but he sent me an email at about 11:30 today stating he didn't intend to demolish any of it, so I don't know what's specifically going on. But in light of that, I just want to let the city know that my client worked with the city to go in and secure the property, which we've done to code compliances satisfaction. And based off the most likely non-compliance with the homeowner of demolishing the property, my client is currently soliciting bids, which then, they have to solicit a certain number of bids to submit to HUD to obtain approval to go ahead with their demolishing of the property. My client's expecting that timeline to be three to four weeks, though I know the timeline imposed by the ordinance, I believe, runs on Wednesday or Thursday. So, I just wanted to make the city aware of that, and if at all possible, just request that my client's hopeful timeline of demolishing the property be taken into consideration when the city is going through their process of soliciting bids for the demolition of the property, should they beat my client to the punch. I've been in contact with Mr. Summers today discussing this. I'm going to keep him informed of my client's progress on the demolition. He, I've asked him to keep me informed on the city's progress as well, so that hopefully we're not kind of both, both planning for the same end, and hopefully, just my client will be taking care of it, and the city won't be expending any resources on that process. So, that's all I have, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for securing it, for the protection of the families over there.
That's no problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next card I have is Scott Schubert.
No longer here.
Merrily Beasley.
Hi, I'm Merrily Rosine Beasley, and I ran for City Council. And the reason I ran for City Council is because I've been standing up here for one year, almost every single month, talking about process improvement things, things that I've learned about the city for the past year. And I've been extremely concerned, because one of the things I learned this past year is that over 12 years, the city has managed to save from the citizens' money, the excess, and they've put it together for about 12 years, and that was, that became about 17-plus million dollars. And it meant that the citizens no longer needed to vote for big projects, that the city council could therefore pay for everything out of this large fund. Anyway, last May, I stood up here because I had grave concerns about the election, because I had done a mail-in ballot survey, and I discovered that when I did the survey, three people, and it was a large sample, it wasn't even everyone, three people had never applied for mail-in ballots, and somebody had voted for them, and one of those people was my neighbor. So, I don't even really believe that Mr. Singleton won that election. And because of that, I started looking more and more at what was going on. And I found out that one of, somebody I knew had been in the count room last May, and she had discovered, or she, when she was there, Paula Dillon had shouted out, "The count is close." And then, she had been told, my friend had been told she could not leave early that day, and she was a volunteer, so she agreed to stay from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. However, Paula Dillon got sick at 10:43 and went home. Okay, so, we don't know exactly what happened after that, but I do understand that James Singleton came into the, into the polling place, which is illegal, and a classy misdemeanor complaint was filed. Now, I know that Bobby Warren has suggested that there was no violation of law, and I don't believe that that's true. So, I just want to make sure that everyone understands that I don't really believe that last year that James Singleton won that election. Okay, so, during the year, I had brought up many things that concerned me, because it seems like what I have seen is that the will of the people sometimes is ignored. My understanding now is that we now have this Collaborate Group, and they're going to put up across the highway of 290, they're going to put up a, an $8 million City Hall. I don't recall voting on that, and my understanding is, is that several years ago, there was some kind of a vote, and the citizens said they did not want City Hall on the other side of 290. So, I don't understand why we are not being consulted. In the meantime, I decided, and I sent an email last Friday, so I'm going to read a little bit of that. "To whom it may concern, I am contacting the State of Texas Election Division regarding our recent election on May 4, 2019. I will be filing a lawsuit regarding this election. I'm going to ask that we have electronic voting put in place in Jersey Village and have another election. I'm also going to ask for the citizens to sign a petition to request electronic voting. We can afford to rent two machines from Harris County." So, I want to let you know that, and I sent that email to the city attorney, also Austin Bliss received that email. I think it's time that we no longer use an old-fashioned box where there's a very large slit in the side of it. It concerns me that we are not using electronic voting, which most cities have. Like, in Harris County, when we do a general election, we use the electronic voting booths. So, I'm, I'm asking for that. There are some other things that I just don't understand why the citizens are not being asked about these very large projects, like for instance, the latest one with Collaborate. You know, I don't remember being asked about voting for that. Now, I want to read something that was posted on the Nextdoor website, and it was written by one of our citizens. It's over in the Jersey Village Policy Group. Mike Brown noted on the Jersey Village Politics Group that if the money used by Collaborate is.
That's your time, Merrily. Thank you. Next card I have is Dawn Eubanks.
Good evening, and I know it's getting late, so I'll make this brief. First off, congratulations to all of you guys, and thanks to Justin. I've been a citizen of Jersey Village. I live on Wall Street, been a citizen of Jersey Village since 2011. During that time, I've had the, the honor and the pleasure of attending both Citizens' Fire Academy and Citizens' Police Academy. Those, those are just one of the, the most special parts of being in part of Jersey Village, is getting to know my neighbors and getting to know the people who run our city. I am currently the Vice President of the Jersey Village Citizens' Emergency Response Team, and we do have hurricane season coming up. And I encourage everybody in Jersey Village to learn more about how our city works and how the protections for our city work. And that is by, number one, attending the Citizens' Police Academy and Citizens' Fire Academy, and getting involved. As a member of the CERT team, it's really nice to know, I know what's going to happen in preparation if we have a storm coming up. You know, we're lucky in, in Harris County that we know when something's going to happen ahead of time. A friend of mine from California last week said, "Dawn, it's raining too much in Texas. You need to move to California." And I go, "Yeah, right." You know, the, the earth shakes there, and you don't have any warning. At least, we know when something's going to happen, and we can be prepared. But as a citizen of Jersey Village, if you want to be a responsible citizen, you need to know more about what's going on in your city. And attending the Citizens' Police Academy or Citizens' Fire Academy are two ways. There are others, just getting involved with the elderly group. But just getting involved with people and being positive. There's been so much negative, and, and I noticed that in the last two or three elections. There's been so much negative and sour grapes. And was, it disturbs me when people either make up lies in an election to, to try to sway people, or when they don't accept the results of an election. And we, we don't need to be torn apart, we need to be a community. We need to be cohesive and work together. And if you notice problems, yes, point them out, but don't just say, "We have a problem." When I go to my boss with a problem, I say, "I've noticed this problem, and here's a solution." So, that's what I'd like to suggest, and I'd like to suggest people get involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Mark Malloy.
My name's Mark Malloy. I live at 7803 Hamilton Circle, past City Council Member of the City of Jersey Village, Texas. Citizens' comments for the '05-13-2019 City Council Meeting, please make my verbal comments and documents given to the City Secretary a permanent record of this meeting. I am here this evening to ask the Jersey Village City Government if they are going to give the Jersey Village homeowners that have a homestead exemption filed with Harris County, Texas, the total 20% property tax exempt. exemption filed with Harris County, Texas, the total 20% property tax exemption, and if they are going to give the 65-year and older homeowners the additional $160,000 homestead exemption. The property tax rate in the City of Jersey Village, Texas, has been set at .742500% for over 10 years and the residential home values have gone up exponentially over these years, allowing the city government to collect more and more tax revenue from the Jersey Village citizens. The estimated increase in property tax revenue received by the city government between the years 2012 to the year 2017 is an astounding 32% because the city government has chosen to accept the additional property tax revenue instead of adjusting the tax rate to allow you to keep your, your tax money, your money. The city government has notified the public through a newspaper article that they have accumulated a per them stockpiled cash reserve estimated to be $17.5 million. Do you think your city government should have done this without giving the homeowners with a property tax, homestead exemption, the full 20% tax exemption, and the 65-year-old and older homeowners with a property tax, homestead exemption, the full 20% exemption, and the additional 65-year-old and older property tax, homestead exemption, which would, could be $160,000? So anyway, I'm going to quote some things that, or at least one thing, and it's here in a post from our new mayor on Nextdoor that was posted 8 October 2018. And I have proof of the statement. I quote, "I agree. I campaigned on easing the property tax burden on the homeowners. By increasing our sales tax base in a positive way, we've survived Highway 290 expansion, survived Dyken Industries moving, attracted companies using Chapter 380 agreements, increased our sales tax base by over 60%, reduced golf course transfer amounts. We have serious interest in Jersey crossing and our grant funding is ongoing, but promising. It's time to put money back into homeowners' pockets by increasing the homestead exemption." City Councilmember James Singleton and City Councilmember Bobby Warren have also shown support that the citizens of Jersey Village, Texas, with homestead, that has a homestead property tax exemption, should be getting an increase from what the city is giving now, which is an 8% property tax exemption instead of a State of Texas allowed 20% exemption and a 65-and-older additional $50,000. Okay, so I'm reading what's the current exemptions. And for right now, for 65 and over, older, it's 50,000 instead of the $160,000 exemption that the Harris County and the City of Houston are giving their citizens. So anyway, currently, a homeowner with a homestead exemption with an appraised value of $250,000 times the 8% exemption is getting a $20,000 exemption. And if they are 65 years or older, they are getting an additional $50,000 exemption, which comes to a total $70,000 property tax exemption. If the City of Jersey Village, Texas, was giving the full 20% property tax exemption on the same $250,000 home, the homeowners would be receiving a $50,000 exemption. And if they are 65 years old or older and receiving the $160,000 property tax exemption, their total property tax exemption would be $210,000. The homeowners currently are losing out on an additional $30,000 homestead property tax exemption-
That's your time, Mark.
-and the 65-year and older homeowners are losing out on an additional $140,000-
Mark, didn't make me gavel on my first meeting.
...exemption.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move along to City Manager's Report. Austin, anything of note?
Mayor and councilors, the report's before you and staff's here to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Austin? All right, we're going to move along to the Consent Agenda. Do any council members wish to remove any items from the Consent Agenda, put on the regular agenda? All right, looking for a motion on the Consent Agenda.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, we're going to move along to regular session. Item one, Consider Resolution Number 2019-24 Electing a Mayor Pro Tem. Has my name on it. So Mayor, I'm looking for nominations for Mayor Pro Tem.
I'd nominate Bobby Warren.
I have a nomination for Bobby Warren for Mayor Pro Tem. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem Bobby Warren.
Mayor, can we have a motion on the resolution with Councilmember Warren's name?
I apologize. Can I get a, a motion on the resolution naming Bobby Warren as the nominee?
I would move to approve Resolution 2019-24 appointing Bobby, Councilman Bobby Warren as Mayor Pro Tem.
Sec, I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussions? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Congratulations again. Item number two, Discuss and Take Appropriate Action Regarding Council Liaison Assignments. So currently, we have Planning and Zoning Commission and Capital Improvements Advisory Committee would be myself, Board, Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals, Greg Holden, Recs and Events Committee, James Singleton, Golf Course Advisory Committee, Bobby Warren, Board of Adjustments, Gary Wobenhorst, and TERZ, Bobby Warren. Okay, so I cannot be on P&amp;Z as much as I love it. Do I have a slate of liaisons? Would anybody like to propose a slate of liaisons?
Well, unless somebody else objects objections to what they currently have, I would just go ahead and put Drew on P&amp;Z to replace you and have everybody stay the same.
Well, I would then bring a point to that. I'm happy to continue on Rec Events. One of the problems I have is I take time off from work to attend that and sometimes I'm not able to. P&amp;Z often meets during the day and I'm available to meet during the day. Am I wrong on that, Bobby?
Yeah, I think P&amp;Z typically does meet in the evenings, at least most times I've seen it posted.
Yeah, P&amp;Z meets in the evenings. The Board of Adjustment meets during the noon hour.
Ah, that's my confusion. Well, I'm happy to stay where I'm at.
Okay, so we need a motion on the resolution appointing Drew Watson to the Planning and Zoning?
And all others staying the same.
And all others remaining the same.
Okay, I'll move to approve, or move to approve Resolution 2019-25, appointing Drew Watson to P&amp;Z and Capital Improvements, Greg Holden to Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals, myself to Recs and Events, Councilman Bobby Warren to Golf Course Advisory and TERZ, and Councilman Gary Wobenhorst to Board of Adjustment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on topic? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, we will move on to item three, Consider Resolution Number 2019-26, Accepting the Resignation of Crime Control and Prevention District Board Member Justin Ray and Appointing a New Member to the Crime Control and Prevention District for the Unexpired Term Ending August 31, 2019. Lori Cootie.
Yes, Mayor. Typically, the Crime Control and Prevention District is made up of the six council members and one resident. The resident member is Jay Lane Duboe, I believe. And so this, this item is to appoint a member to the open position which is created when Justin Mayor Ray resigned.
Okay.
I'll just make a motion to accept the resignation of Justin Ray from a Crime Control and Prevention District Board and appoint Drew Watson as a Director of the Crime Control and Prevention District for the Unexpired Term Ending August 31, 2019.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the topic?
Now, do we need, was the resolution cited in that motion or? Oh, never mind, sorry.
Yep. All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, we're going to move on to item number four, Consider Ordinance Number 2019-13, Receiving the Planning and Zoning Commission's Preliminary Report and Calling a Joint Public Hearing of the City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission Concerning the Proposed Zoning Amendment Change from District G to District A and the prop, for the properties located at 16401 Lakeview Drive and described as Res A1 Jersey Meadows, 16327 Lakeview Drive and described as Res B Jersey Meadows, Zero Lakeview Drive and, and described as Res D Jersey Meadows, and 16501 Jersey Drive and described as TRS 1B and 12E NM ABST 228 JM Diment in the City, in the City of Jersey Village, Texas. Christian Summers, Building Official.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I will defer to the Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Rick Faircloth. I am available for any questions.
P&amp;Z has, has met on these issues and as it said, this particular items here are to take all of these, including this building, police, fire, and so forth, to make those from a commercial or residential. It'll have some issues to help us with the state with sound barriers close to residential areas and we had a unanimous decision on that, on that subject.
Thank you, Rick. Anybody have any questions? All right, looking for a motion?
I move to approve Ordinance Number 2019-13.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item five, Consider Resolution, I'm sorry, Consider Ordinance Number 2019-14, Receiving the Planning and Zoning Commission's Preliminary Report and Calling a Joint Public Hearing of the City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission Concerning the Proposal to Amend Chapter 14 Building and Development Article IV, Zoning Districts, Division II, Use-Based Zoning Districts, Section 14-101, Regulations for District A, Single Family Dwelling District, to Revise Subsection A to Authorize Police Stations and Fire Stations. Christian Summers, Building Official.
Again, I'll allow Rick Faircloth to introduce this item, address any questions. I'm also available for any questions.
Mayor and council, this is a similar issue of property that covers the police station and the fire station for the same zoning issue we had on the previous ordinance. And it was unanimous with the commission that was there.
Any questions for Rick?
No, I think we just put the cart before the horse. We just made these buildings illegal. We should probably adjust it to make them legal again.
All right.
Actually, did neither. We just received a report and scheduled a public hearing, so, but yeah, I would suggest that when we do it, we do it in the reverse.
All right, any more discussion on the topic? All right, seeing none, need a motion on the, on the ordinance?
I move, we approve Ordinance Number 2019-14.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to item number seven, Consider Ordinance Number 2019-16, Receiving the Planning and Zoning Commission's Preliminary Report and Calling a Joint Public Hearing of the City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission Concerning, Concerning the Proposal to Amend Chapter 14 Building and Development, I lost my space, Building and Development, Article IV, Zoning Districts, Division, you know what, I'm forgetting the wrong one, I apologize. Wrong number six. Consider Ordinance Number 2019-15, Receiving the Planning and Zoning Commission's Preliminary Report and Calling a Joint Public Hearing of the City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission Concerning the Proposal to Amend Chapter 14 Building and Development, Article IV, Zoning Districts, Division II, Use-Based Zoning Districts, Section 14-101, Regulations for District A, Single, Single Family Dwelling District, to Revise Subsection C to Limit Types of Masonry That May Be Used for Vineyard Treatments. Christian Summers, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for letting me know. I'm not the only one who's ever done that. Again, I'll defer to Mr. Faircloth.
Yeah, this particular item is, to get some code requirements, especially with our property that's going to be razed recently, we've, are potentially to be razed, we want to have some very aesthetic-type masonry. And there's a lot of language in here about if it gets damaged, how it gets repaired, repainted or repaired and to back to the original state. And from the commission, we had a unanimous decision to go forward with this, this recommendation.
Thank you, Rick. Any questions from council? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion on the ordinance.
I move, we approve Ordinance Number 2019-15.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Now moving on to item seven, Consider Ordinance Number 2019-16, Receiving the Planning and Zoning Commission's Preliminary Report and Calling a Pub, a Joint Public Hearing of the City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission Concerning the Proposal to Amend Chapter 14 Building and Development, Article IV, Zoning Districts, Division I, Generally Section 14-88 Regulations That Apply, That Apply for All Districts, to Revise Subsection A 19A to Provide for Screening of Commercial Development from Resident, Residential Zoning Districts. Christian Summers, Building Official.
Once again, Chairman Faircloth will address any questions. I'm available as well.
This must be the Abbott and Costello Show tonight. Yeah, this ordinance goes along with our other one. Talks about screening from both residential and business districts was the, the difference that we wanted to address in this particular ordinance. And again, council, the commission unanimously approved the requirements to make this change.
Okay, any discussion on the topic? Any questions for Rick, who's earning his paycheck this evening?
[laughing]
All right, seeing no discussion on the topic, I'm looking for a motion.
I approve, I move to approve Ordinance Number 2019-16.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Move on to item eight, Consider Resolution Number 2019-27, Approving the Sale of Approximately 23.34 Acres of Land Southeast of US 290 on Either Side of Jones Road in Jersey Village, Texas to Collaborate Special Projects LLC for the Sum of $5,250,000 Pursuant to Real Property Purchase Agreement Made By and Between the City of Jersey Village and Collaborate Special Projects LLC in Authorizing the City Manager to Take All Appropriate and Necessary Steps to Complete the Sale of Said Property. Austin Bliss.
Mayor and councilors, thank you. Tonight, the city council can take another exciting step forward in the development of Village Center. Last August, the city council voted to authorize the purchase of this land and in October 2018, the city closed on the purchase of approximately 23.34 acres of land from Jones Road Holding LTD. The city paid $5.25 million for that property. Tonight, the city council can enter into a real property purchase agreement with Collaborate Sposh, Collaborate Special Projects LLC to sell the property to them for the amount of $5,250,000, the same amount we paid for it. It's anticipated the sale of this property will close in August of this year. Last month, the council approved the assignment of the option for the other parcels of land, so with this approval tonight, council, or the Collaborate Special Projects will control and own all of the land upon the part, upon the purchase being completed. The attached resolution authorizes the sale of the property and authorizes the city manager to take all recommended, or all appropriate necessary steps to complete the sale. to take all recommended, or all appropriate necessary steps to complete the sale. We recommend approval of Resolution twenty nineteen dash twenty, or dash twenty-seven.
All right, any questions from council?
Austin, I read through the whole purchase agreement. I was happy to see due diligence in there, the buyer's going to do their job. One of the questions I had was that I noticed that earnest money is only a hundred dollars. Is that typical for projects of this, purchases of this size for a hundred dollar earnest money?
That's the amount that came back from the city attorney on that?
I don't see us losing any money. I was just surprised at that amount, but thank you. I'm good with it.
My experience on real estate transactions is earnest money. I mean, basically, if a deal falls through, it's written in there usually that the buyer's going to get the earnest money back anyway.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not too worried about the earnest money because it is a relatively short amount of time. We would have bigger issues if this were to somehow fall apart, but obviously, at this point, I think that we are so far down this road, it's not really a big worry at this point. I just wanted to say, it feels great to be here after we passed the resolution authorizing the purchase of the property. I think at the time I said, hey, you know, I know that not everyone agrees with this, but after looking at everything, I feel comfortable with it. I think it's in the best interest of the city, and that I would basically, at that point, let future events be the judge of whether that was the right decision or not. As we sit here today, I'd say it's pretty clear that it was the right decision.
I agree. I wasn't anywhere near worried about it, just curious.
So confident. I agree. I, you know, ached and pained over that decision, but it's really nice to be here today, sitting and, you know, about to approve this resolution to recoup that five point two five million dollars. And where we're, you know, as Austin mentioned, this puts the land and the option for the rest of the land completely in the hands of Collaborate Special Projects, and it's moving forward. We're going to have a lot of, I know we're going to have a lot of really great news coming up in the next couple of months, and I can't wait to share that with the citizens. So with that, any more discussion on the topic? All right, looking for a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution two thousand nineteen dash twenty-seven.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to item nine, Consider Resolution Number twenty nineteen dash twenty-eight Awarding the Bid and Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Contract with Nova Painting for the City of Jersey Village Ground Storage Tank Rehabilitation Project at the Seattle and Village Water Plants. Austin Bleese, city manager.
Mayor and councilors, last week on May seventh, the City of Jersey Village engineer Brooks and Sparks, Frank Brooks, who is here tonight, along with city staff, received bid documents related to the city's ground storage tank rehab project at Seattle and Village Water Plants. Nova Painting was the responsive qualified bidder submitting a bid of three hundred and fifteen thousand. City engineer Brooks and Sparks reviewed the bid proposal, and it is recommended, it is the recommendation of Frank Brooks that the city select Nova Painting as the contractors for the city's ground storage tank rehab project at Seattle and Village Water Plants. The bid came in at three hundred and fifteen thousand even after engineering fees, which the total cost should be about three hundred and seventy-five thousand, about a hundred thousand dollars under budget for where we had estimated that.
All right, any discussion amongst council on this topic?
I just want to make sure, you know, usually when you see something come in way under budget, you kind of worry a little bit. Do we have any, nothing, no reason to believe that there's a concern, or do we just, were we just being super conservative on budgeting?
There was a lot of investigation that went into that from all of the bidders, and I know that Frank did some due diligence and phone calls to recent customers of this company, and he can answer that a little bit more, but I know due diligence was done.
It's better, I was pushing the button. Anyway, we didn't have any negative reports from them, so take the money.
And I mean, worst-case scenario, you've got the performance bond, right?
Right.
Correct.
Austin, how often do we have to repaint these?
They last about twelve years, sometimes fifteen. It just depends on the climate and how much chlorine we're putting in them. The real problem is the inside of the tanks, because it's got a structure in there, so.
Any other questions of Frank? Thanks for hanging out with us, Frank. So seeing no discussion on council left, I'm looking for a motion on the resolution.
I move we approve Resolution number two zero one nine dash twenty-eight.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on topics? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. That'll move us into finally, mayor and council comments. Start to my far right, Councilmember Gary Wobenhorst.
Maintain the tradition, huh? I just, both parties have already left, and a lot of other people too, but I just want to be repetitious and thank Justin Ray for his service, and also the person that was Employee of the Month. She manages that communications center, and if she doesn't do her job, that nine-one-one system doesn't work. You don't get police, fire, EMS answering the call when you need them. So very critical position, and for her to do the job that she's doing as well as she's doing it is, enough can't be said about it.
I worked with Rain years ago at a totally different company, and we really enjoyed working together. She's a very hard worker. I would like to thank Justin Ray for his extensive service to the city. I'm very excited to see his future, and congratulations to Mayor Andrew Mitchum. Can't wait to work with you over the next two years.
Want to thank Justin for his service. I consider him to be somewhat of a mentor after I've gotten to know him and as I'm going into this endeavor. And I was very impressed with Rain as Employee of the Month and just the litany of awesome things she's done to earn that award. And on that note, hard work takes teamwork, and I'm looking forward to working with this team, not just council, but Austin and staff. I look forward to the next year working with you guys.
I'd like to thank Justin as well for his service. Something unique about Justin is that he's not a politician. Justin is a true community leader, and there's a big difference. He does this because he loves it. He does it because he loves the community, and what Justin brought to the table will be difficult to replace. You've got your big shoes to fill, because what he brought was a level of expertise and understanding and a vision for Jersey Village. And that is probably, his legacy will be his vision and all the things that were started during his tenure. I think, I attribute a lot of that to his efforts. So I think we're a much better city because of his service, and I thank him for it.
I also wanted to thank Justin Ray for his service to the city. Justin and I first got to know each other over some beers at Dad's driveways and drafts, and when we discovered that we both had served as Speaker of the Senate at the University of Houston during our respective times there. And as I came to be elected on city council and working with him, I came to truly appreciate his leadership and his advocacy for the city. And I think that's probably the part that is maybe least realized by most people, just because a lot of his advocacy occurred behind closed doors when talking to developers and other interested parties to try to make a lot of the economic development that we are seeing now happen. And so he played a huge role in that, and I know Mayor Mitchum was involved in that every step of the way, and will continue to carry on that legacy, so I'm really looking forward to working with you on that. So yeah, congratulations, and let's get to work.
Well, I just want to thank everybody for sticking around, and I also want to reiterate, Justin Ray was, we're going to miss him around here. Hopefully, he's not a stranger too much. He really helped build the foundation of what I think we're about to build over the next couple of years. There was a joke that was made at our council budget retreat this last Friday, and that I'm going to be the mayor with the most groundbreaking shovels, because we have so much that's about to happen. We have Vild Center, we have flood mitigation, we have the Golf Course Convention Center. We have so many things that are about to happen, and we really have a lot to thank Justin for in that regard. He really worked behind the scenes to make sure that it went all as smoothly as possible, and I look forward to his bright future in northwest Harris County. I want to say thank you to everybody for putting your trust in me as your new mayor. This is my hometown, I love this place, and I hope to make everybody proud over the next two years. I'm term limited, so I'll do the best that I possibly can to fit what I can in the next two years, but stay patient with me if you have any questions. I'm extremely accessible, and I work for you, so let me know what you need. With that, we're going to adjourn. Thank you very much, everybody.